Open Meetings Act is posted on the wall. Please note that all council members are present. We're going to start tonight with the proclamation for Problem Gambling Awareness Month. Whereas the National Council on Problem Gambling has designated March 2024 as Problem Gambling Awareness Month, and whereas problem gambling is a public health issue affecting millions of Americans of all ages, races, and ethnic backgrounds, and whereas problem gambling has a significant societal and economic cost for individuals, families, businesses, and communities, and whereas problem gambling is treatable and treatment is effective in minimizing this harm to both individuals, society as a whole, and whereas numerous individuals, professionals, and organizations have dedicated their efforts to the education of the public about problem gambling and the availability of effectiveness of treatment, and whereas the National Council on Problem Gambling invite all residents of Beatrice, Nebraska, to participate in Problem Gambling Awareness Month. Now, therefore, I, Robert Morgan, Mayor of the City of Beatrice, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as Problem Gambling Awareness Month. In the City of Beatrice, I encourage all citizens to support the National Council on Problem Gambling in their efforts to mitigate gambling-related harm nationwide. Witness my hand and official seal of the City of Beatrice this fifth day of February 2024. Mike, I believe you're here with somebody else as well?
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
You betcha.
Okay, moving on to consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council. Will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on January 15th, 2024, as on file with the city clerk's office. Item F, approvals of Boswell reported claims in the amount of $53,763.93. Item G, approval of funding request from the Beatrice Pickleball Association in the amount of $18,000 to resurface the court and add permit lines for three pickleball courts in the city auditorium as recommended by the Beatrice Plus Advisory Board. Item H, Resolution Number 7219, executing the annual certification form for the Nebraska Department of Transportation for the period of October 1st, 2022 through September 30, 2023. Resolution Number 7220, executing the OAP Amendment Number 1 and HDHP Amendment Number 2 to the City of Beatrice Board of Public Works Employee Health Plan. Anybody want anything removed? If not, Mr. McLean?
I move the items listed on the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Gentlemen, your vote, please. That passes eight, zero. Item 3, public hearings or bids. Tonight, we have a public hearing for the purpose of considering on the acquisition of real property for D2 Strategic Development Fund 7 LLC. A Nebraska limited liability company described as follows. Lot 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10, Gage County Industrial Park, second addition to the City of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, Gage County, partial number 011643500.
Yes, so in 2002, the city sold this ground to D2 Strategic Development Fund 7 LLC. At that point, they looked at they had an economic development project they were looking to move forward with. We sold them this approximately 20 acres for $210,000. Recently, I made contact with their attorney as that project has not moved forward and inquired about the city repurchasing that property from D2, and they agreed to sell it back to the city of Beatrice for the same purchase price of $210,000.
Discussion. Yeah, I mean, you know, long story short, we weren't 100% sure what they were going to do with his land anyway, and I think that was a little bit of an uneasy feeling for a number of people on the council. And this puts us in a good spot to control the property that we want sold. Anybody from the public? If not, let's close the hearing.
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:06 PM.
Second.
All in favor? Passes eight, zero. Resolution Number 7221, executing the contract for sale of real estate and any all necessary documents to acquire real estate from D2 Strategic Development Fund 7 LLC.
I move the Resolution Number 7221 be passed and adopted.
Second.
The only thing I would note is closing is looking to be in the middle of February. So should be in about two weeks.
Seeing no more discussion? Your vote, please. That passes eight, zero. Resolution Number 7222, setting a public hearing date for the proposed annexation of property owned by the city, by the city, Gage County, partial number ID 004148000.
I move the Resolution Number 7222 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So in case everybody's not familiar with the partial ID number, this is the Schwarzkopf property. This is the ground the city bought here just recently that is adjacent to the industrial park. I think at the last meeting we had, we declared it, we rezoned it to industrial. We declared it as part of the industrial park. The next step is to work on annexation. In order for the city to annex it, this body first passes a resolution. Then within 60 days, we have a public hearing. We'll look to have that public hearing, that first meeting in March. There'll be public hearing, playing a zoning, it'll be a public hearing here. And then we'll have an ordinance read at three separate meetings pursuant to state law. And so we're looking to hopefully wrap up the annexation sometime in April. But again, this is the Schwarzkopf property the city bought here about six months ago.
Any discussion? From the public? If not? Your vote, please. That passes eight, zero. Resolution Number 7223, executing First Amendment to the LB-840 loan and related documents between the City and Midwest Housing Initiative Incorporated and Porter Estates 3 LLC.
I move the Resolution Number 7223 be passed and adopted.
Second.
In February 2023, the city loaned, LB-840 loaned to Midwest Housing Initiatives, Inc. We loaned them $12,500 for them to construct one senior, excuse me, one senior housing duplex there at the side of the old hospital around 10th and Arthur Street. That was approved. They started construction, everything's going well. We started going back and looking through the documents. Some places the documents referred to one duplex, sometimes it referred to two. And so we just need to clarify that it's one duplex, two living units. And this, what this amendment does tonight is just clarifies that's what was the intent then. And that's the intent going forward.
Any discussion needed? If not, your vote, please. That passes eight, zero. A Resolution Number 7224, executing the agreement with Hannah Kealan Associates PC for professional services to conduct a blight and substandard determination study and general redevelopment plan for Stoddard Elementary, Paddock Elementary, Lincoln Elementary School sites.
I move the Resolution Number 7224 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Again, as we move forward with the redevelopment of the school sites, again, Lincoln Street and 33rd Street's moving forward, the schools building, their new building. So as we kind of have that agreement sitting out there, one of the large economic development tools that we have is TIF. TIF is only available in a blight and substandard area. So the first step is to have a blight and substandard study done. Hannah Kealan generally does our studies for us. This particular study, they'll look to expand area number two to include Stoddard School, and they'll create areas 11 and 12, and that'll be Paddock and Lincoln, schools of those particular sites. And then I think the study's $8,500, and Hannah Kealan says they'll have it done by late March, early April.
So Tobias, can you explain to people that this is just a designation? That it doesn't change the value of the properties, doesn't change?
Absolutely. So yes, once again, the designation as a blight and substandard is not our terminology. Those are what the state legislature has deemed that we have to use. It has nothing to do with how good or bad properties actually are. There's a number of criteria in there. I think there's about eight or 10 criteria that are kind of listed within the state statute. That's what Hannah Kealan will go out and survey. One of them is any building that's 40 years or older is deemed to be blight and substandard pursuant to the definition. So when you start looking at three elementary schools and all of them are built in the 50s, they all meet that. It will qualify. There's some other standards they look at, but yes, it does not change your valuation of your house. It doesn't impact the resale of your property. Most times, people don't have any idea that they're located in a blight and substandard area moving forward. I did talk to the school before we moved forward with this. They were okay with designing these areas as blight and substandard.
Yeah, so just so everybody understands, this is just another tool in our toolbag. When this first came out, when the state first came out and said, this is something you can use, we actually asked at that time if we could just simply designate the entire community that, in one big, paint it with one broad brush, because then we didn't have to come back and do this piecemeal as we had something come up. And then they came back the next year and changed it that you could only have a certain percentage of your community in this, because obviously, we weren't the first ones with that idea. So they fixed that problem, and so it's just a term. It has nothing to do with anything else.
I know Ted brought up the percent. Are we kind of maxed out on our percent?
So right now, as of today, let me get my spreadsheet out here. We are at 34.14%. Once we annex Schwarzkopf, we will go to 34.99. State limit is 35%. So between then and the time that the study comes back and you guys adopt it, hopefully, everything goes that direction. We'll come back to some areas that DTIF and take back out of those areas. We did this a number of years ago. The biggest area was the airport. We DTIF the airport because, again, they don't pay property taxes, and so they weren't going to be able to use the benefits of TIF. And so we took them out of being a blight and substandard area. Today, I've already identified probably about 30 acres of ground that we could take out, which would put us back into a nice, safe spot of about that 33% range.
In the past, we've taken fairly big swaths. We are allowed to just spot these three different areas?
Yes, so.
Without taking the big swath like we usually do?
So part of it depends, you got to have the right mixture of properties. So in the past, we did one where we're going to have a lot of open ground. Well, you had to have a certain percentage of the houses there be, or the buildings be blight and substandard. So we went and grabbed some residential neighborhoods that had that 40-year age limit. Since all the buildings here already qualify on their own, these will be smaller districts. They'll just be the buildings themselves and the ground that the school owns already.
Yeah, Bob, I would just add that when we got together to discuss this, that we decided to be proactive and try to get that property to serve a better purpose sooner than later. And so that's why I think we decided we would move this forward.
Cedar's already in a blight and substandard, isn't it?
Correct, Cedar's already in. That's why we're, they're in area number three, which is why they are not included tonight.
And by doing this, that we can get grants and stuff to help us with the, since it's blighted the substandard, correct?
Usually, blight and substandard doesn't get you grant money. What it does is allow, again, TIF financing to be available to them. The grant money comes in from either the type of housing you put down or Stoddard's located in a QCT, a qualified census tract. So there's grant funds out there for that particular building. Those are the types of things you look at. Usually, blight and substandard does not get you access to grant money.
Anybody from the public? If not, your vote, please. That passes eight, zero. Okay, Resolution Number 7225, supporting the submission of an application to the U.S. Department of Transportation for a rebuilding American infrastructure and sustainability and equity known as RACE Grant to fund the Court Street Access and Safety Transformation Initiative.
I move the Resolution Number 7225 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Yeah, so we are working with Merchant McIntyre, again, on a number of grants. One in particular is the RACE Grant. That's looking for the Court Street Access and Safety Transformation Initiative, or CAST Initiative. So what they, one of the things they asked for were letters of support. And so I've been working with local entities and downtown business owners and property owners to get those letters of support. One they wanted was from this body themselves, and so we put together the resolution. Hopefully, you guys pass it tonight. If so, we'll put it with the application. Assuming you guys pass it, we'll also have the mayor sign a letter of support as well to go along with that application. We do have letters of support from Senator Dorn's office already and from Nebraska Department of Transportation. And so assuming you guys are on board, we'll continue to put this together. Applications are due at the end of February.
Any discussion needed? Okay. Gentlemen, your vote, please. That passes eight, zero. Resolution Number 7226, endorsing and supporting the passage of LB-850.
I move the Resolution Number 7226 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So about a year ago, again, the city was awarded the Rural Workforce Housing Land Development Grant. We were able to receive $1 million. This was to go to the Paddock Kensington Development Project. We thought everything was working well until we got the actual contract from the state of Nebraska. And not only ourselves, but every other recipient of that grant turned the money down because the federal strings that were attached to the dollars made it impractical and impossible to use those funds to do any type of project. Fast forward about a year now, and now you have LB-850, which has been introduced into the legislature to help alleviate those federal strings. And then it also has in there to, basically, I kind of give first preference back to those communities that were the original recipients of the grant. How that process will work, nobody knows for sure yet. But the first step is to get the federal strings removed so people can use those funds to do the actual rural workforce housing land development initiative that they came out with originally. So tonight, we're asking you to support LB-850. Again, assuming you guys do that, we'll submit it up to the committee that's hearing this particular grant, or the community's hearing this particular legislative bill, and we'll get that submitted in time for the hearing on the bill.
Is that something you'll go to, to testify?
We talked about today, we'll look to see, have somebody from the city make sure they're there.
I don't want to speak, but I'd be more than happy to go along.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion needed from the public? Okay, if not, your vote, please. That passes eight, zero. Okay, item G, Resolution Number 7227, authorizing the mayor and the city administrator to execute a residential lease for 1908 Lincoln Street.
I move the Resolution Number 7227 be passed and adopted.
Second.
As everybody remembers, we purchased 1908 Lincoln Street here a couple of months ago. We've gone through the process. We have it out currently for rent. Rather than waiting to get an actual tenant and then bring it back a lease for this body to sign at some point, we thought it might behoove us to go ahead and have you guys approve kind of the generic lease, if you will. And then when we do get a tenant, the mayor and I can sign that particular lease and get him in there. I didn't want to have a really good tenant come in tomorrow and tell them, I'm sorry, you have to wait two weeks until I have another meeting. And sometimes that just doesn't work in life. And so that's why we're asking you to sign this. We do not have a tenant at this point. We've had a number of inquiries. Nothing has come through yet.
Any discussion needed from the public? If not, your vote, please. That passes eight, zero. Going to move on to ordinances. Got several tonight. First one is ordinance number 24-2. This is the third and final reading, amending the article XVII of the Beatrice City Code regarding abandoned and junk vehicles.
I move that said ordinance be given number 24-2, be read by title for the third and final time.
Second.
Just again, to familiarize yourself with what the proposed changes are, we would add in boats and watercraft into the definition. So those would now be included. And this particular proposal would increase the penalties from $100, $150, and $200 for the first, second, and third offense to $250, $375, and $500.
Any more discussion needed? We've read it a couple of times. Anybody from the public? Good evening.
Hello. Mitch Minkie, 210 Granville Avenue. So it's, a question was asked about how soon the city could go back if they didn't take care of it. And it was answered that they could go back three days in a row if they wanted to. My concern or question is, is the city going to work with the citizens? Like, you know, maybe they're working 12-hour shifts, maybe they're in the hospital or whatever. So is that going to be in the ordinance? Or is that just going to be per situation to where it's like, oh, we're going to work with this person, we're going to work with that person? How's that going to work?
Our standard is always try to work before we have to hit any type of fines. We would like to handle things at the lowest level and have a conver, first thing will be a conversation, actually, saying, hey, why don't you just clean it up? And then if they say, no, we're not going to do it, then we'll go back into the fine situation. But we would like to have a conversation to take care of the problem at the lowest level before moving into that area. And that's, that's standard practice today.
Okay, well, and the other idea or thought I had is like, you know, if somebody gets a visit and, you know, it's going to take time to maybe find a trailer, a truck, frame, all that kind of stuff. So it's just, I didn't know how lenient the city was going to be on working with the people depending on their attitude.
Mark, go ahead.
I was going to say, I can speak to kind of the frequency that this happens. It rarely gets to the point where I'm having to like threaten to take this to court. I think in three years, I've had maybe a handful get that way. And then usually after that process has started, they get the property cleaned up, and usually we dismiss without any fines. I think I've only ever had one fine actually get paid for this.
Okay, and then on the enforcement of it, it was noted that it's not going to be a police situation. They won't issue a citation for it. So is a person going to get a letter, I'm guessing? And then does somebody just drive by again? Or do the police do it? Or how does that work?
Our code enforcement officer is the one that goes out and checks all these properties. So we treat it as basically nuisance violations. So he's the one responsible for doing that.
Okay, and then also in the minutes of a previous meeting, it was stated that they're going to educate employees to report. Well, which employees is this? Is this any city employee? Is it just certain? Is it also phone calls from the public or what?
All the above.
All the above? Okay, that's fine. So in the other question, I'm thinking this is apples to apples, so bear with me. So with the ordinances in place with campers and trailers being parked certain places on your property, is that handled the same situ, the same way? Or is that handled a different way?
It really depends on if, like, if the trailer or vehicle is like not able to be operated on its own or doesn't have tags or whatever, it would fall under this. But where they're part, where they are able to be parked and where they're prohibited to be parked is handled by our zoning code.
Okay, so that would be handled a different way than this would be?
Very similar. It's still the code enforcement officer and myself.
Okay, the reason why I ask is because we moved into our house. We parked our camper in front of our house so we could unload out of it. We had a knock on the door from a police officer saying, and he wanted my wife to call me from work to go move it now. And then she said, well, he's at work, he can't, he's out of town. So I moved it, put it on our property, then I get a letter saying, so for the reason why I'm asking is because police, I mean, are they going to be a contact?
If they, if it becomes like a traffic obstruction or anything like that, it does fall under their jurisdiction to issue citations.
Parking on a property is not a traffic issue, but yeah.
Well, you know, in front of your house, so.
I'm just curious as whether, how that's, those ordinances are the same as this or if they're handled a little bit different or whatever, my question. So.
Yeah.
And then, I think that's it. So thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Okay, no more discussion. Your vote, please. That passes eight, zero for the final time. Okay. What's that? Oh. All right. Okay, ordinance number 24-2, the ordinance amending section 16, I'm trying to get all those numbers. 16, 621, 16, 622, 16, 623.1, 16, 623.2, 16, 623.3, 16, 623.4, 16, 623.6, 16, 624, and 16, 626, the Beatrice Code regarding abandoned junk vehicles to repeal conflicting ordinances part of the ordinance and provide for publication in electronic form and for the effective date of this ordinance. And it passed eight, zero. We good?
We're good.
All right. Okay. Ordinance repealing section 938 of the Beatrice City Code regarding school fire drills. We are going to take a vote on suspending the rules and be read for three times tonight. So, Mr. McLean?
I move that said ordinance be given number 24-5, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
And a motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. So your vote, please. That passed eight, zero. Ordinance number 24-5 by number the, only the first time, 24-5 the second time, and 24-5 the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 24-5 be passed and approved.
Second.
So section 9-38 of our city codes, one that's been on the books for a number of years. It looks like in 1971, the city recodified all their city codes, and it's listed in there. So we haven't touched it since 1971. I don't know how long it was on the books before then. But what it says is it's the fire chief's responsibility to require schools to have one fire drill per month. This chief hasn't done this. The previous chief didn't do it. The chief before him didn't do it. It's just not a thing that does, it happens anymore. The schools have their own insurance and their own requirements and their own regulations that they fall under. They take care of those things. And so since this is not our practice and hasn't been for decades, we figured we might as well get this particular ordinance off the books and cleaned up a little bit. It's your fault?
Are you blaming me for that?
I didn't say that.
All right, any discussion needed from the public? If not, your vote, please. An ordinance 24-5 has been adopted on a vote eight to zero. Ordinance amending section 5-6 of the Beatrice City Code regarding the keeping of fowl. We are going to read this only one time tonight.
I move that said ordinance be given number 24-6, the title thereof be approved, the said ordinance be read by title only one time tonight.
Second.
So what the proposal here does is it talks about fowl. So a fowl includes a number of types of birds, but includes chickens. This proposal would limit you to no more than six fowl at a single-family residence. So if you have a duplex, something like that, they're not allowed. The coops or cages have to be 10 feet away from the property line. They have to be in a covered enclosure, so they're not able to kind of roam free. They have to be, again, in kind of a covered enclosure. No roosters. And we put the effective date July 1st of this year. So if somebody today has seven chickens at their house, they would have till July 1st to come into compliance.
Barbecue it?
What?
Barbecue it?
You just have to figure out which one's your least favorite, I guess.
Okay.
Well, just to be clear, this is going to, this is going to affect a lot of people. There's a lot of people in Beatrice that have chickens and such at their homes. So I'm asking those people that have those, please pay attention to what we're doing.
I absolutely agree with you, Ted. But we also just passed one on junk motor vehicles, and we have one gentleman that's kind of in the last three readings to complain. So if it goes over their heads and they skip it and they get a ticket or a citation later down the road, it's their fault.
Well, I, I no disagree. I'm with you. But I think that junk motor vehicles is a little bit different because we have taken a run at the junk motor vehicles half a dozen times. And we've never done anything. We've never really changed anything. We've never really enforced anything afterwards. It hasn't changed. And I think that people didn't bother to show up because they figured that was what was going to happen again. And it's not so. So.
We've taken runs at farm animals.
I, I just, I, you're. I, I just, I, you're, we're reading off the same page, Rich.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, all that's probably all true, but if you don't get started on some of this, you'll never get it done. I would also say that myself, and I think, Dwayne, we got called on some chicken runs this summer, and we went to several of them. And it, when somebody else's livestock, or whatever you want to call it, affects somebody else's property, they have a right to have peaceful use of their property, just like the person with the chickens. We researched it, and we looked at different communities and what they do. We looked at Hastings, Tobias looked at Hastings, I looked at it. And this is the best we could come up with. It's a compromise. So, uh, when, the one I went on, I must tell you, it was the day after it rained this summer. A very good friend of mine, I've known him for a long time, and his wife have a nice patio. They couldn't sit on it. After the rain, I went up there right away, and that thing stunk so bad, he had like 30 broilers in the backyard. That's a problem. And if we don't stop it now, it's, it's going to get worse. And everybody has a right to do things, but the property owners next to you also have a right to protect their property values. If he wanted to sell his house and put it on the market, how, how quick do you think that would sell? We didn't have any chicken ordinance, did we, Tobias, until this one?
Correct.
They could have had 500 if they wanted. So, I agree with, I understand both sides very well.
I'm just saying.
We're not on any opposite side here. We're just saying that nobody ever shows up to speak up for themselves. What part of that did you miss? That's, we're all for the ordinance. It's that nobody shows up, and then pretty soon, they're all going to be calling us up complaining. But go ahead, Bob.
Anybody from the public? Okay.
Uh, one thing. What are the fines for these? If they get caught?
This falls under a general ordinance? This would fall under the general ordinance, and that can go like usually up to a maximum of $500. You can also piecemeal it out, do the 100, 200, 300.
Amen.
So there's a number of ways you can approach it.
Confiscation?
Yeah. It could also be.
I'll get rid of the chickens first.
The only thing that I will say is, again, it's going to be like the junk vehicles. Our first avenue is a conversation, because I think that's the right place to start before we jump into violations and give them the opportunity to kind of help us walk through it, because that's the best way to resolute.
Absolutely.
Okay. Gentlemen, ordinance number 24-6, my title one time?
Yeah, vote on it.
I have a motion, we haven't voted.
Yeah, I was going to say that.
Okay.
Now, your vote, please. And that does pass eight zero.
It'll be back in two weeks.
Okay. And the next ordinance, we are going to read one. Oh, that's right.
You're getting ahead of yourself.
I'm new.
Sorry we suspend the rules.
Ordinance number 24-6, and ordinance to amend section 65-6 of the Beatrice City Code regarding the keeping of fowl, to repeal all other conflicting ordinances or parts of ordinance, and to provide for the publication in electronic form and for an effective date of this ordinance. Now we'll move on to the next ordinance, and we're going to read this just one time tonight as well. Ordinance amending section 9-130 of the Beatrice City Code regarding when the sale and discharge of permissible fireworks are permitted within the city.
I move that said ordinance be given number 24-7, the title thereof be approved, the said ordinance be read by title only one time tonight.
Second.
Before I have Tobias explain this, I just want to remind folks that we're going to do this, well, depends on what the vote is tonight. Uh, it could be one, two, or three times. Um, I think, you know, we also certainly understand there's a lot of issues on both sides. And compromises are probably the best thing that we can do to try to take a look at both sides of this issue. However, that said, some of you may be thinking about, maybe there's an or- an amendment that you have. Amendments are typically wordsmithed. Um, I will not discourage anybody from putting forward an amendment tonight, but if it does pass, you can put an amendment in, in two weeks and have the opportunity to have these gentlemen wordsmith what you want, so you know you get what you want. And so, I'm just going to just say that upfront, that a lot of times to do the amendment, it's nice to have it worded exactly the way you want it, instead of passing something that may or not be exactly what you want. So, with that, I'm going to have Tobias explain the ordinance, and then turn it over to Gary from the, uh, committee.
So, today fireworks are allowed June 28th to July 5th. The proposal before you tonight goes, we allow fireworks from June 29th to July 4th. So it shortens it by two days. That's the proposal before you tonight.
That's.
So.
I think there needs to be some clarification on what he says, Bob.
Well.
There's a difference between allowing discharge and selling. So.
Both. I'm sorry. It would be selling and allowing discharge, thank you, would both occur then from June 29th to July 4th.
Okay. So, Gary?
Yeah, we've kicked this thing around quite a bit, uh, at committee meetings and just talking, I suppose, individually amongst ourselves. Uh, there's a lot of things, uh, some may want some wording change or things like that. At this thought, it's the first reading tonight, I would ask that, uh, we would pass it in the form that it's written right now. Tobias and Taylor usually do a pretty good job, and it's pretty thorough, and we can always look at amending anything down the road. So, to, for tonight, I would ask that we approve it as is written.
Discussion?
I'd just like to comment what Gary said. You know, the last time this came out, we voted it down and it died. It didn't, it was an ordinance state like it is. I think we need to look at some kind of a compromise, but we need to pass this tonight, I think, to get it to that phase, so you can make amendments and do it. So, I'd just like to recommend that we do get it passed to the next reading and go from there.
Well, I do a little history on this, I guess. I'm a history guy. So, we used to have this at one day. We used to have shoot fireworks off for one day. And then we changed it to first, second, third, and fourth. Four days. Then we changed it to seven days. And now we're changing it to six. From one to six isn't a compromise. It's a giveaway. I, I, personally, I'd like to see it go back from, to the first, second, third, and fourth. Alleviate the June. I have no problem with people selling fireworks. You want to have people sell fireworks year-round? I'm okay with that. I have a problem with them discharging that. I, you know, I think if you take this back to six days, we're going to be right back here where we are today next year. Because I think people were caught off guard that it was changed last year, and it was simply too long. And everybody says, oh, it was just the fifth. No, it wasn't. It was longer than that. We also seem to think that, that if people, only the people who are complaining are unhappy about this, you can say, well, I've only got 40 calls. Well, and you, you got 40 calls from people that have reached the boiling point and called you. You're not, you're assuming that everyone else is happy with it. I'm assuming that everyone else is tolerating it. So, um, I'm not going to make an amendment tonight, because you've asked me not to, but I do intend to, to ask this body to reduce this to just the week, to, to just July 1st, 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, and, and no longer. But like, like I said, I'm, I'm not opposed to people selling them. I'm just opposed to people being able to shoot them off. Okay?
Good. Jim, anything?
Yes, I, I don't disagree with what Ted said. I am going to vote yes, so it goes through tonight by one, one time. The, uh, but I am going to propose that we keep the selling of fireworks to what it is currently today. There's a businessman sitting in the crowd right now, who, when we put this bed earlier or late last year, and didn't revisit it till this year, has already invested thousands and thousands of dollars on, in money on fireworks that he intends on selling in 2024. Um, I think we don't, as a body here, we shouldn't be taking money out of a local business's pocket. Um, if, if I recall, there wasn't a whole lot of support for or against this ordinance to begin with. And I, I brought it up. That's my job as a councilman, to bring it up. It's not that I want fireworks 365 days a year or anything like that. My dogs hate them as much as any other dogs hate them. Uh, it's just part of the, part of your job as a councilman to bring stuff up here. Uh, so my, I will be talking with the guys to make sure that we do not, my vote is, I don't care about the days of discharge, I care about the days of sell.
Bob? Oh. The mayor, man.
Um, I'm going to go ahead and vote for this tonight, waiting for the amendments to come through. But I do want to ask Ted, when you bring your amendment through, one, first, second, third, and fourth, are you going to add into that that they could sell but not discharge? Could that be added into the amendment?
I have no problem with that.
Well.
Well, I'm also in favor of the first through the fourth. I wrote, I went and looked at the calendar, and I know we're talking about, you know, having a Saturday and Sunday or something like that, a weekend. This year, you'd have, you know, first is on a Monday, fourth's on a Thursday. Next year, you'll have Friday to be the fourth. And most people can fire that. The 26th, you'll have Saturday. The 27th, you'll have Saturday, Sunday. The 28th, Saturday's the first, Sunday's the second. The 29th, you'll still have Sunday as a weekend day. Then the 30th, it goes back to just like this. So basically, the thought about having it where it would be on a weekend day, you've got this year, then you've got one, two, three, four, five years that there'll be a week, you know, weekend day count in Fridays evenings, before you get back to where you wouldn't have a weekend day. So I agree with Ted, and I, I like the idea of the first through the fourth. I have no problem either if we go to having it where a company can sell before that, you know, and, because they're going to go to, they're going to go to these other towns and buy it. But if we keep it, and then the other thing I want to do is, let's look at having a set time limit. Whether that's midnight every day, every day, or instead of having it where the police officers and the public doesn't know whether it's 10 o'clock off or midnight off, or something like that. But again, you know, I'm, I will vote yes tonight, knowing that, you know, about looking at doing the change at the next meeting. But I'm not voting for this, I'm just voting to extend it.
So, um, so Gary, uh, your committee has reviewed this multiple times, and you have like four people on your committee, that they discuss all this, and then they, they're the ones that's recommending the six?
There, there it is. We've discussed it.
Okay. And the way I've read this is, we weren't at three, we were at four.
We used to be.
No, you said three. So, first, second, third, and fourth is four.
Start, we started with one.
Well, okay. So we went four, then we went eight, and six is kind of a compromise.
It's a compromise. Don't disagree.
Not from one, I'll grant you, but, uh, so, I'm with everybody else here. We need to see all the amendments before we can take a vote on this, you know? Yep.
How about from the public?
Dana Hido, 208 Sherman Street. Okay, back again on fireworks. Wow. Um, you guys did catch everybody off-guard last time. And that was because, I believe, when you voted on it, you suspended the rules, and you voted it all on the same night. And a bunch of us who were kind of paying attention missed it. So I think if you would have taken that over three meetings, I don't think we would be here. I really don't. I think the public would have spoken out. But we're here. So let's talk about compromise then. To me, the compromise is the four days. And the reason I say that is, I'm with Ted. I'd like it to be one or two. So, to me, four days is great. It's easy to remember. It's the first through the fourth. I, I agree with you. I don't really care how many days people sell, as long as they don't discharge. And as long as the police then, if people are discharging, will go and stop them from doing that, if they're doing that on the 28th, the 29th, the 30th, or whatever. But I do think that, if you're saying, Ted, you're getting 40 phone calls, I don't know how many phone calls you usually get, but that to me sounds like a lot on an issue. So, I do think people do care about fireworks. I don't like to take away from business. I come from a business family, runs deep in my veins, and I think business is great. But we do have rules and laws for businesses that they have to follow. And so I do believe the compromise is the first through the fourth. Thank you.
Right. Dave, for discharge, correct?
Yes. I don't, again, I don't care how many days they sell.
Yeah, they sell them in Missouri year-round. Wyoming, Colorado.
Start November 1st with Christmas.
Mitch Meeky, 210 Granville Avenue. Fourth of July is like my second Christmas. I could shoot them all day long for a week or more. But I'm also understanding the pets, I'm understanding, you know, there's people that just don't like the loud noises. I, I understand all that. Unfortunately, there's going to be people, no matter what laws and fines that you do, they're going to break the laws. You're going to have people shoot them off on the 5th. You set the time at 10 o'clock, which I think in the city ordinance now, except for the 4th, is 10 o'clock, but they still shoot them. They shoot them at 2 o'clock in the morning on the 4th. You're just going to have those people. There's only so many police that can go to the 10 different calls, and then by the time they get there, they might be done. Fireworks are a consumable item. So, if, if you decide to restrict the sell, the, the discharge of those dates, not the selling, but the discharge, you're also restricting the amount that can be consumed in that four days, which can affect sales. And so, it's just, it's something to think about. It's not, you know, you, like somebody said, you can sell them all year-round. But if you only want to sell them for those four days, for, from, you know, 8:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night, you're only going to go through so many fireworks in that amount of time. So you are going to hurt sales. I get it, it's not all about sales. But it's something that you have to consider, especially like was mentioned earlier, the business owners are dumping thousands of dollars into their business to do this. So they want to return on their investment. And, you know, do I get the compromise talks, you know, one to four, and the eight and six, and all those other things? Yes, I get that. The 5th of Jan- of July, that, to me, what, that's fine, why being off the table? Would I want it to the 28th? Yeah. Do I think the 29th and going it is, is, uh, a compromise? Yes, I do. But again, if that's just for selling, you're going to hinder local businesses. Because there's only so much consumables, fireworks, that you can do from four days compared to six. And that means lower sales, that means lower return in investment. So it's something that you need to be thinking about when you want to restrict the discharge of them.
I'm sorry, I have to apologize. I came right from work, so.
You look better than I do, I'll tell you, after two days of flying.
I do work. Uh, Rita Hido, 208 Sherman. Um, I think, Gary, I'm going to pick on you just a little bit.
Jump in.
I found it ironic that you are, feel bad for friends that are bothered by smells and sounds of chickens. But you're not bothered by people who are offended by the sounds and smell of fireworks?
I didn't say that.
So, the other thing is, and I can only, off the top of my head, think of one, but when you say people can't sell liquor at bars after a certain time, did you think about that they would make a lot more money if you let them sell longer? Did you go to them and say, "What do you guys think about selling liquor longer because you could make more money?" And I got a feeling that there are other businesses that are impacted by rules and regulations that you guys make, that you decide for the public good, that perhaps they sacrifice something for public good. I have a recording of me in my house with fireworks going off loud enough that we could hardly speak over the top of them. I like fireworks, I like my neighbors. I just don't know that I could handle how much time it is for them to enjoy the freedoms that we have. So I agree with Daughter. One to four, sounds like a pretty nice compromise. Chris and others can sell all year long, all I care. And, but shooting them off, one to four. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hi, Chris Callson, Seventy Twenty-Five Ella Beatrice. First off, I wanna talk about bars being able to sell alcohol. They can sell alcohol three hundred and fifty, or three hundred and sixty-five days a year. I got a limited amount of time that I can sell my product. And the longer that you give me, I'm appreciative of it. Last year was the first year I seen the possibility of what my company could have. We actually went ahead and invested in our own tent because we seen the possibility of what you guys gave us. And I'm asking that you don't take that away from us. I'm just trying to stake my claim in Beatrice. I love Beatrice, I've lived, born and raised here. I want, I want my business to be here. I wanna grow my business into where it's gonna employ more than just being my family. And, and it's starting to do that. You talk about the rights of people that don't enjoy fireworks. What about the rights of the people that do enjoy fireworks? You got three hundred and sixty-five days in a year. Give 'em seven days to shoot fireworks, that's a compromise. Look how many days you got that you don't have 'em. You talk about not being able to discharge? People can go to Missouri and buy 'em year-round, and they're gonna come back here and shoot 'em whether you allow it or not. Look at New Year's Eve. How many people were shooting fireworks New Year's Eve? There is tons, like at least an hour. So I just ask that you would consider what you're saying, you know? I would really appreciate seven days to shoot, seven days to sell. It would really help us out, and my customers would really be appreciative of it. Like, like the gentleman said back here, this is, this is a lot of people in town's Christmas. They eat it up, they save their birthday money, kids save their birthday money, adults save their birthday money. I got people buying two thousand dollars worth of product that I shot, and I see 'em every day. So, please, just consider giving 'em seven days to shoot what they enjoy shooting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, but there's lots of people that do.
Margaret Hayth, one oh four West Granville, here in Beatrice. So, this kinda sneaked up on me, I didn't know about it till I heard you on the radio. But last fall, when this issue came up, and after they shot fireworks off this last July, as I've been out and about town and talked to different people about fireworks and having issues, what I've found is, some areas had no problems with them at all. Other areas in town had a lot of problems. We're down in Belvedere, and unfortunately, just a block away, we had a couple of neighbors that started in on June twenty-eighth, and they shot them, they were, I guess, having a competition because one would set theirs off, and then the other one would set theirs off. And, of course, I know you had a timeline, but these are the kind that they like pushing that limit, so even though maybe the cutoff was midnight, they'd still go till twelve-thirty, one o'clock in the morning. And they did this every single night, except on the fifth. And it got to the point, I couldn't sleep, I just laid there in bed and would read, knowing that, 'cause they were loud, I mean, only a block away. And you'd drive by the next day and look in the street, and here's all this crap from their fireworks, they just left 'em out in the street, but they had the ones with the cardboard tubes, that there's like twelve of 'em, I think, and it was just, 'cause you'd just lay there after a while, and you'd just count 'em once they started in, and you knew, well, there they go. Then the next one would take off and do that. So, in that case, no. They, they abuse it, and I said, "It's too bad," but you know, it just seems like you've always gotta have somebody that's gonna abuse it for, for the other people. Now, as I have talked to people, honestly, and again, trying to get 'em to show up to this is a whole different ballgame, but most of 'em, what I've heard is they want it back the way it was. They want it July first through the fourth, they, they think that that's, that's enough, that they, they just think having this, well, especially the eight days that we had this last year was absolutely ridiculous. So, and as far as going ahead and selling, no, I don't, I don't care how long they sell 'em, I just really do not want them being able to discharge them for seven or eight days in a row, and I think even six would be a lot. And I think this coming July, if this goes on again, I'm waiting, we're trying to put in a new deck. I'm gonna invite you all over, and we're gonna have a Fourth of July party, and we can just all sit there and enjoy all those fireworks going off together.
I'll be there, yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm not kidding. All right.
What do we?
What?
What are you gonna feed us?
Uh, I make a really good barbecued pork.
I'll be there.
All right.
Margaret, Margaret, first of all, you always come up here with something good, and I appreciate it. You've heard me sit up here and complain that there's times during the year that I have fireworks going off, and we don't live but about five blocks from each other, and I'm sure you hear those too. I don't call the police officers when that happens. And I'm not picking on you by any means. What, what, what is the, what's the resolution to, to solve the issue when they're, they're lighting 'em all year anyway? And now, I mean, you don't have to answer this, okay? I'm not, I'm putting on, it's for everybody, everybody's come up and talked. This is the first time we're reading this tonight. When you come back in two weeks, there's gotta be some resolution somewhere, because, like I've said, and, and Margaret, I wanted you just to testify that you hear it too all year long in our neighborhood. How you, how do you, how does limiting how many days somebody can shoot it to the first to the fourth solve the rest of the year? That's, that's what I'd like to hear in two weeks. But, that's what we need to hear from the people. How, how you gonna solve this? Because I know that Jay Murphy, who's sitting back there, is not gonna have enough police officers to control this around the city. That, that's an issue. I've heard tonight that we, we start everything with a, with a, with a conversation. I certainly hope the next time I'm doing fifty and a thirty-five, I'll just get a conversation and not a ticket. Okay? So, not picking on anybody, just, just suggestion. The, but come here in, in two weeks with, with some resolution, that's what we're here for, is to talk these, talk these things out, and figure out what's good, what's good for everybody. Thank you.
Well, in answer...
And I like pork.
Yeah, to your response, so, as far as, to me, it's, it was, okay, so that was just the two neighbors I gave the example of. But I mean, those weren't the only two people in my neighborhood that were shooting them off. There were a lot of other ones too, where the example you're giving with the, sorry, I won't call him what I was gonna call him, the, the person that is shooting those off all the time, that's just one, that's just one. But it's when you got a whole bunch of 'em going, like I said, it's almost like they were having a competition. And then somebody, two or three blocks down the street, you know, were doing the same thing. And I said, "It just," but it's only, it's only during the fourth. And granted, yes, I know on Christmas, New Year's, people will shoot 'em off, but it's not that continual from dark till midnight in the morning. It at least ends.
Yes.
So, all right.
Thank you.
You bet.
I'm Alicia Turner, three eight South Twenty Second Street. So, I come from a firework family and also a military family. So, I understand when people are saying that they don't like the noise of the fireworks. I get it. I've talked to one of my family members down when they had a flashback to the war because the fireworks were going off. It happens. I'm not heartless, I feel for you, clearly, totally do. Even though he had a moment where it took him back to a bad place, he still enjoys fireworks. He loves what the fireworks mean. It's our freedom. And he is the first to be out in, in the, the depth of it all, of lighting off those fireworks when we're together as a family celebrating. I also have a kiddo who is in the eighth grade this year, so she has been able to fundraise for herself on making money to go to Washington DC. One of the fundraisers that we chose to do this year was to sell fireworks. Because of having the extended amount of time to sell fireworks, we were actually able to raise all of the funds that she needed to get her entire trip paid for to go to Washington DC this summer. I know that my uncle, Chris, his company, CNC Fireworks, they have put out numerous fundraisers to Beatrice Public Schools. I believe they had the wrestling team there, they've had the tennis, soccer?
Track.
Track, track. They've had the track teams there, they have raised numerous funds. I know, and I know this isn't in Beatrice, but they've worked with fraternities up in Lincoln to support their fundraising needs, to provide money for them so that they're able to do what they need to do with their fundraisers. I agree, a compromise, the fifth was a bad day, but thank you for allowing us to have it because the fourth was horrible, as we all remember that rainstorm. I was in the red hut out there at Twin Rivers selling when that all happened, not a fun time. If it was not because of the fifth that you guys gave us, we would not have had our own firework show that day. But I do agree that you could come up with a compromise for discharging. For selling, I agree with the majority of the people here, who cares? Let 'em do it, let 'em do it three hundred and sixty-five days. His business is bringing your town taxes and payments of those taxes, so you should really consider the fact that he is also giving you guys money because he's paying his taxes, and that is in turn increasing your revenue here in Beatrice. So, let him sell however long he wants, make a compromise on how many days you want to discharge. I'm cool with going all the way till the fourth, don't do it before, or don't do it after the fourth, that's totally understandable. But I really hope that you guys will listen to what the public has said, and I hope that you guys will have conversations with business owners of fireworks so that you can come up with a fair compromise and make it so that he's also able to make money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
I just have an afterthought, and I wanted to kinda beat into what Tim was saying. Like Tim said, that there's gotta be a compromise. And I think part of that compromise is gonna be educating the public to what the laws actually are. I got on the city website last fall, and I was finding conflictive information of what the ordinance was and what the ordinance is. So I think that's part of it, is trying to educate the public. We try to do that at our locations. And the other part of it, and I know it's hard, I, I know our officers do the best they can, part of it boils down to enforcement. If they're doing it at one o'clock, midnight, whatever, part of that just boils down to enforcement. So, and that's where the neighbor, neighbors need to be calling them in. So, I would agree, I would be unhappy if I had a neighbor shooting fireworks at one o'clock in the morning, that would bother me. So, but, don't let a rotten apple spoil the fun for the rest of the people. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, before I make my last comments, we have, when we have somebody on our councils has experience at something, sometimes I would, Dave, you've sold fireworks for a long time, if you have anything you'd like to weigh in on, we'd probably appreciate it.
Well, as, as we've discussed, compromise, I think, is important. Obviously, you've got more than just Chris, who's involved in sales. There's a large contingency organization here in town that, that, that sells, and, and sells considerable amount. They're not represented here. But you're always gonna have some, you're, you're gonna have people that want one day or two day, and you're gonna have people that, that are okay with four, and you're gonna want people that want ten. The state law allows you to sell fireworks and consume fireworks from the twenty-fifth of June to the Fourth of July. That's the ten days that the state allows. Each individual, individual town then has their right to pick and choose, you know, what they want and how they, and how they wanna run it. Part of the reason that, that I recommended that we go from the twenty-ninth through the fourth is, contrary to Mr. Ru's comments on, on the five day, I believe the sixth day is something we can live with. I believe that the sixth day gives a nice rotation where we don't have to worry for the rest of our days, what year offers Friday or Saturday, or Sunday or Saturday, or however those days rotate, six always covers that. I also believe that, that shooting only until ten o'clock on the twenty-ninth through the second is something that the city just has to get used to understand, okay? Please, I take a little bit of a different perspective. I go to Carney every year, I've gone to Carney every year for thirty years and sold out there, okay? They've had the same rules now for almost thirty years in how they do it and what days they run it, and they do six. And at ten o'clock on the twenty-ninth through the second, the town stops. They understand how it works. And on the third and the fourth, I have the right to sell until midnight if I want. I've never made it past seven o'clock on the fourth. But at midnight, it stops. Now, we can go back and we can look at York, Seward, Fairberry, Hastings, Grand Island, all the different places, and some people are gonna say, "Yeah, but you're running the city of Beatrice, and you're helping that out." When it comes to compromise, I just believe that six is the way to go. And I've had a lot of phone calls on both sides. You know, those that want one or two or four are gonna say, "That doesn't work." Those that want seven or eight or nine or ten are gonna say, "That's not enough." And you're always gonna have that, okay? You're always gonna have that when, where not everybody's happy with a compromise, that's why they call it that. I just believe that if you get something that you can live with and you enforce what you can. Now, we've talked about this a couple times tonight, I don't care how long they sell it. Gentlemen, please understand, if you can sell it, they're gonna shoot it. That's just the way human nature is. We don't live in Missouri where we can buy it three hundred and sixty-five days a year and then have to covey-hole ourselves into a certain number of days, okay? We live in a situation where this only lasts for a short period of time, and we shoot it when we buy it. And I think that that is a foolish thought for us to think that we can sell it on a day and not expect the consumers that just bought it to not shoot it until they fit into the next day or whatever the, the legal one works. I was called that we ever came up with allowing anybody to shoot on the fifth. Rainstorm or not rainstorm, and I understand how that works, that was an anomaly. You just can't shoot past midnight on the fourth, that's the way the game works. You can't sell it, you can't shoot it, and the state doesn't even allow it except for special permits.
You voted for it.
I wasn't on the council when it voted.
Last year?
I voted against it. No, I wasn't on, not when you passed it.
That's true.
I believe that the six is a good compromise. I've not had a conversation with Chris or any of the other retailers in town. I understand, you know, how many of you would just have it be the first and the second, or maybe go back to the third and the fourth. I just think that six is, is way better than ten and a, and a decent compromise from, from two. That's my belief, and that's why you asked, and I told ya.
Thank you.
You said in Carney where you've worked, six twenty-nine through July second, they can shoot them off, but they stop at ten.
Ten o'clock.
And then you said, the third and the fourth, they stop selling at midnight. Do they stop shooting at midnight?
They stop shooting at midnight, we can also sell up to midnight, yes.
Thanks.
Well, yeah.
I agree with what Mr. S says about the compromise. I think if we could sell seven days and shoot six days, that'd be a nice comprom, compromise. And the reason I say this is, having a full weekend is always helpful in our business because we have people going to the lakes, we have people going out of town. I've had a, I, this year I had a lot of people, since we had a longer season, they stopped in our stand... they stopped in our stand and bought from us before they went to family out of town. So, having a full week, it was very helpful. So, just food for thought. Thank you.
Hey, kids, I got to ask you a question.
Yes.
How many days can you sell in Wyomar?
In Wyomar?
Yep.
Wyomar sells eight days, shoot eight days.
How far is Wyomar from Beatrice?
About 15 minutes.
So I can go in 15 minutes, get fireworks and bring them back and shoot them, right?
In fact, when you had a four days season, we set a stand-up in Wyomar, you wouldn't believe the number of, uh, Beatrice cars we had.
So it wasn't foolish of me to think that selling for seven days would be okay?
Nope, nope, not foolish at all.
That's it?
Yes.
Lincoln for the longest time was two. And if you don't think those 20 stands that got set up in Princeton and Cortland and every, every other place
Yep.
weren't set up so that the city of Lincoln would drive 15 minutes out to buy their stuff and then go back in and shoot it, you're fooling yourself.
Hickman, Davie, Benton, all those towns cater to Lincoln before Lincoln can sell.
By allowing him to sell for an extra day over discharge, it keeps money here instead of going to the alley lying communities.
Yes. Well, I understand what Chris was saying. You won't get me to agree with a seven day sell and a six day shoot.
You won't get me to a si- six day shoot then.
Well, that's why we have one vote.
Gary, let's wrap up with you and then we'll vote and then.
Just a short bit here. I was on the council when we passed this last ordinance and Joe Bilzbach was also a councilman and he said he wouldn't be here because he didn't run again. He said, "I wish you would revisit it again." And we've done that and we've had a very healthy conversation, all helpful. But out of respect for my committee and my committee members, if you people would give that to us because we're going to have to hash this out. It doesn't do any good for the council to talk to each other or you to talk to the entire council when it's going to come from our committee unless we've lost respect for our committees. And we only have committees because Mayor Morgan, we wanted them and Mayor Morgan let us have them. So I think we need to start respecting our committees a little bit. But however you want to get the information, I've got an email or you can send them to Tobias and I'm sure he'll happily give them to us. And we need to sit down as a committee, unless we don't want committees anymore, and revisit this again and see where we end up. But I thank each and every one of you for coming here tonight.
How do you get on a committee? I've never been contacted by anybody on my council to voice any concerns about anything. So how do I get on a committee?
This is a council committee.
The city councils.
We have committees, city council committees for this and many other things.
Gary, how do we know when your committee is going to talk about a particular thing?
Well, we don't, our committees aren't open to the public. We have to get together and do it. None of our committees are.
So how do we know when to contact you?
Send it to us this week. How's that? Send them to Tobias this week so we can review them. Try to make them short and concise so we know what you're talking about, please. Does that satisfy you?
Yeah, no, it's just seems a little silly to have a committee and not have any input from the community.
You will have, you will have input when you send us the, the information, the questions you have and your solutions.
And, and just one point of clarification. I think we've done a pretty good job this year of looking at topics like this where we don't suspend the rules. So, I think that was a request mostly from the public. And I think we've done a good job and will continue to do that. That's why you saw the water file being read only one time tonight and this one, one time tonight. So it gives people the opportunity for input. And I think that's, I think it's been a good thing. You know, certainly you could say, "Well, gee, we're here longer," but that's okay because that's our job. So.
Just real quick question. Tobias, how long has it been on the books from the 1st through the 4th?
I would have to go back and look. I don't know that for sure, so I could do some research.
Been quite a few years, right?
Yes, I mean, I think it's been that way. I, we admitted it at one point. Uh, it looked like it was admitted at one point for the, um, 2000 year, New Year. I think that was added there, but I don't know when we changed the 1st to the 4th. I'd have to do some research.
Okay, so it could be 20, 22 years, whatever. Okay, thank you. That's all you.
Yeah, you look very propelled exed out there like they're pulling something. You have a problem with anything. Do you know who your councilmen are?
Actually, I don't. Well, I know you guys know my councilman.
No, no, no. Your specific councilman. We are divided into four wards. You live where?
I live South Twin Second Street. I've been stand by the YCA.
She knows her councilman.
That'd be those two guys sitting, Tim and Terry are your councilmen. This is why it is important for people to know who their councilmen are. Because if you have a particular problem, a particular want, contact one of those two guys and they will bring it to the committee that it needs to be brought to. And once it goes through the committee, they will call you back and say, "Hey," or are supposed to call you back and say, "Hey, this is what we were talking about." And, but you, yeah, everybody needs to know who their particular councilmen are. Like Mike and I are on the 3rd ward and, uh, Gary, you know. But that's the way to do that. That way you get to know what the committees are. They'll get it to the right committee and then they'll get back to you. Or they should.
Can I make a suggestion?
You most certainly can.
Can you like put that stuff in better print versus like trying to find your address on a small map that you can't zoom in on?
Do you know what she wants, Toby?
No, not entirely, sure. On our.
Break, breakdown of the wards.
She's saying the breakdown of the wards on the map is she can't zoom in to look at her specific address.
Yeah, but it like, tell me what areas people are. Don't think you can zoom in on the map.
I think if you highlight the councilman, their ward will light up and you'll see exactly what their boundaries are. And she'd have our email address and contact and information on that. It'll highlight it for you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to vote on this one time tonight. So gentlemen, your vote, please.
Yeah, just so we're clear, all that means is it comes back in two weeks. It doesn't mean if it passes, it'll come back in two weeks for further discussion. So, if we're all ready.
That passes 8-0. Ordinance number 24-7, Sam Lernan. An ordinance to amend section 9130 of the Beatrice City Code regarding the sale and discharge of per- for permissible fireworks are permitted within the city to repeal all other conflicting ordinances part of the ordinance and to provide for publication electronic form and for an effective date of this ordinance. And I too, like Gary, I would like to thank everybody. I think the conversation was thought out. I think it was professional. And I think, I shouldn't say this, but I will, Washington DC could take a lesson from us here tonight.
One more thing, Bob. Get to stuff in your comments and suggestions and solutions to Tobias as soon as you can because of our committee will meet again before the next council meeting. Or if we have any amendments, we'll bring them back then based on probably what you guys are thinking.
Okay, we have another ordinance tonight. Ordinance authorizing an amendment to the 2021 water SRF loan agreement between the city and the Nebraska Department of Environment and Energy as recommended by the Board of Public Works. We are going to first vote to suspend the rules on this one and read it three times tonight, should it pass.
I move the said ordinance be given number 24-8. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended and the said ordinance be read by only, number only three times tonight.
Second.
Okay, your vote, please. That passes 8-0. Ordinance number 24-8 by number only the first time, 24-8 the second time, and number 24-8 the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 24-8 be passed and approved.
Second.
So at the last meeting, uh, we talked about the change order that came through on, on the water main project. And so we went back, we talked to the state. They're willing to increase our SRF loan by $1 million. Uh, this million dollars will be at 1% interest. It's still over 30 years. When you blend everything together, this one and the, the previous loan that we have, our interest rate will be 0.07%. We'll begin making our payments on that one, or like I said, over the next 30 years.
Pretty good money.
Did you ask him, uh, maybe we could?
I asked, but that was not an option that was given to us.
Just a thought.
Any other discussion from the public? If not, your vote, please. That passes 8-0. All right, next item is, is the public forum. The purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration of later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Anyone here for the public forum?
It's Minky, 210 Granville Avenue. I just got a couple of small things.
Okay.
One is, uh, when we, when you put on the agenda, the write-off for the ambulance bad debts, can we put the amount on there? Because when we do other, you know, the Board of Public Works or this or that, you put the amounts of it. But for the ambulance write-off debts, there's not an amount there. And when I've talked to other people, they said that it used to be on there, for whatever reason, it got taken off. So I'm just asking to see if it could be put back on there. Um, and the other small thing is on the, the camper, or not the camper, the watercraft and cars, is there, in the ordinance, is there a definition or description of who decides what determines that this watercraft or anything is unreparable or not, you know, deemed that it needs to be removed? So, that's it.
Anybody else? If not, there are no discussion reports tonight. Um, the next regular city council meeting is Tuesday, February 20, 2024 at 7:00 PM in the, right here in the BPS Administration Building Board Room. Mr. McLean?
I move the meeting be adjourned at 8:21 PM.
Second.
Your vote, please. Passes 8-0.